Come on. Ho, 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 and welcome to the December 12th meeting of the Monroe-Woodbury Board of Education. Please rise and join me for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire our passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I get a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Questions and comments from concerned citizens?
Ms. Emily Schafter.
We just wanted to say thank you for supporting the music program.
If you'd like to say, we will be honoring fire safety poster winners as well as our championship soccer teams. You can't hear how I don't want to...
You sound like John with that beard. He needs to come down.
Swing.
Nobody's listening again.
Yeah, alright. I guess we're taking a recess.
I guess we are.
Well, I think after the fire safety, right? And after the soccer, I couldn't lie here. Guys, everyone said later. Now, can I do this update? Soccer and Twitter and later?
Do we have any...
So I do have an update.
Do we have any public...
Not now. Not now.
We're not done yet.
Not now. Now the kids... No. Now the kids... Oh yeah, see? Look, that's what happens when I move over. Look at me.
No, I wasn't talking to him. I talked to Don.
Yeah, when that's up.
Close to the power, right? We need to send...
Yeah, oh, what's up with that? Okay, let's wait. Did the babies leave too? Weren't they cute? What happened? I know, they are too cute. One of them said something about Santa as they were walking over.
I'm not taking over. That's like...
Yeah, I know. They don't want to have that.
No.
But if you feel like you're...
I'll just roll me out of the thing. You know? Just let Stacy take over, huh?
It's very special.
I'm gonna go?
Yep. Okay, let's go.
Noreen, we're still good? Alright, updates on questions and comments from concerned citizens?
I have an update. The last time we were together, Kim LaScorsese got up and she talked about her concern about students feeling bullied and she talked about a survey. So I know that Lorraine as well reached out and reached out to myself and Dr. Hassler and shared some questions on a survey. But one of the things that we've been doing as part of our strategic plan is we've been meeting monthly with our high school students. And we feel that before we offer another survey, we really would like to talk to our high school students and make sure that we're asking the appropriate kinds of questions. And we've done a survey every year. So the thought is to take one year off without doing a survey and then do the survey next year. But again, that's going to be up to the students that I meet with, and I'll be discussing that with them next month. That's it.
Thank you. Now we have Frank Scolante with the presentation of the fire safety commendations.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Frank Scolante. I'm the chief emergency officer here at the Monroe-Woodbury Central School District. Michael J. Fitzhugh was the director before me and was a major part of the fire safety poster contest for all the years it's been in place. While he is no longer with us, we honor his memory in the Michael J. Fitzhugh Jr. Fire Safety Poster Contest. Each year, the Monroe-Woodbury Central School District, in cooperation with the Monroe-Woodbury Fire Districts, conduct the program of fire safety at our elementary schools. The firefighters come out in force with the fire trucks and instruct over 2,200 students. The firefighters use their personal time to teach our students and accomplish this task in two days. I know the firefighters use vacation, personal time, and even leave their own business to be there. They serve as a true example of community working with the schools in partnership to enhance the educational process and safety for all. Special thanks tonight to our Board of Education members, our superintendent, Elsie Rodriguez, and her cabinet, for the support, and the five principals and their staff. They coordinate this tremendous event. Principals Karen Brock from Sapphire Elementary School, Christopher Berger from Smith-Clove Elementary School, Joseph Cotto from North Main, Christine Alt from Central Valley, and Brian Jardis from Pine Tree. Special thanks to them and their team for the support. Further, our district's emergency preparedness initiatives involving fire safety and various emergency preparedness drills would not be possible without the support of our fire, police, and ambulance first responders. So tonight, we are here to acknowledge and congratulate 16 students from the five elementary schools who won first place at their school for their grade with a trophy. It is our honor to acknowledge and present the Monroe-Woodbury Fire District with a plaque for all their continued support to our district. And here tonight, we have with us to accept the plaques for both Woodbury and Monroe, we have Second Lieutenant Lenny Lucchese. Lieutenant Lucchese, please come up and accept our plaques. contest winners is our Board of Education trustees Kristen Hess and Stacy McClary. And now comes my favorite part of the evening. Students, when you hear your name, please come up this way, up the stairs carefully to accept your trophy, and then stand on the end by the lieutenant, the fire lieutenant, and we're going to take a picture at the end. From North Main Elementary School, the winner for second grade Connor Dumphy. Come on up, Connor. From third grade at North Main Elementary School, Leah Woods. Come on up, Leah. Awesome. From the fourth grade from North Main Elementary School, Brian Lloyd. Okay, we'll hold it for Brian. And from the fifth grade, Andrew Liang, all from North Main Elementary School. Come on up, Andrew. From Pine Tree Elementary School, second grade winner Carter Evans. Also from Pine Tree, third grade Anushka Chaidak. The fourth grade from Pine Tree, Callie Catalano. And finally, from Pine Tree, fifth grade winner Helena Van Tassel. And now, from Central Valley Elementary School, second grade winner Kevin Jen. Kevin Jen, come on up. Congrats. And our third grade winner from Central Valley, Caitlin Coyle. Fourth grade winner from Central Valley, Lilian Castello. And finally, the fifth grade winner from Central Valley Elementary School, Naomi Membrano The first grade winner from Sapphire, Charlize Valentine. The kindergarten winner from Smith-Clove Elementary School, Nora Hamilton. And finally, our first grade winner from Smith-Clove Elementary School, Sophia Mohe. And there you have it, ladies and gentlemen. Give them a big round of applause.
Sorry. Are you okay?
The beard...
Is it hot?
No, it's not. It just gets swollen off my ears. Next time I need...
You should go sit down with the kids. Oh, yeah. Come on, boys. We should dress up. Have you seen this? They said we... They said we... They said we... They said we... Oh, yeah, next year.
Now, when I get real, huh? Nice to remember.
I said next year, Mrs. Claus.
Oh, my God, that'd be awesome.
Yes.
You and John.
No.
We could go in back. Next year.
Alright, now we have the recognition of the New York State Soccer Championship Teams, Ms. Lori Hawk.
I'd like to ask the members of both the Boys and Girls Varsity Soccer Teams as well as their coaches to come on up on stage, please. Slide up to the front a little bit. Good turnout. Yep, stay right there. At the outset of the fall season... We got everybody? It's a lot of champions in one place, folks. At the outset of the fall season, we knew that our varsity Boys and Girls Soccer Teams were made up of hard-working and talented student athletes and coaches. Although we knew the teams would be successful, we could never have imagined the fairy tale ending that we experienced this November. On November 11th, within an hour of each other, the Boys and Girls Varsity Soccer Teams, the players and coaches you see standing before you, became state champions. A state championship in itself is an amazing accomplishment, but to have two teams do it from the same school on the same day in the same sport, well, that's just unheard of. It's been an incredible season, and the outpouring of pride and congratulations from our school district and community has been overwhelming and greatly appreciated. And tonight, with the Board of Education, we will continue to celebrate two teams, two titles, one family. Congratulations to our athletes and coaches. And our board has graciously got you a little surprise gift that each of you will get at the end of the meeting. So thank you and congratulations again. We are very proud of you.
Are we giving them out now?
No, we're just going to give it to the coach.
Oh, okay. No. Are we taking the picture?
Alright, yeah.
Everybody get out.
Wait. You're too big for us. Take video.
All right, good evening and welcome back. We're going to continue on with the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2018 regular meeting of the Board of Education?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the annual professional performance review hardship waiver?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education manual update, that is the removal of the form. Ms. Rodriguez, do you want to comment on that or...
Yes, we... John Hubert decided that that was not the appropriate place, and we counseled, we spoke with our attorneys and said that form should not be there. So we removed it.
Fair enough. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. First reading of the policy manual update. Chris?
These three policies have to do with the business office and financials, acceptance of gifts, grants, donations, the use of the district credit card, and the budget transfers. We just revamped them, we changed them to match current procedures, and so we'd like them to be on the first reading now.
Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the manual update?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First reading of the policy manual. Anything else? Chris? Or is that...
That's it. That is the first.
Alright. Can I have a report?
From the policy committee, we're on next meeting, January 14th. We're going to have two more policies in the financial business office working on. It has to do with the purchasing and investment procedures. And then we are going to start health and wellness. We're going to look into those policies that, I think we did them a couple of years ago, but we just, there's a few that need updating. So those are the ones that we're going to start for the new year.
Alright. And just to remind everybody that those meetings are open to the public, they're welcome to attend.
Riveting. Nine AM.
Nine AM Monday.
Chris, we have a good meeting.
Monday.
Nine AM on a Monday. Think you got a winner? Don, anything from facilities?
Yes, we had a meeting yesterday. Glad to update that we've agreed on the new bathroom locations. So for the fields, that was one of the most important things. It's progressing very nicely, things are moving along. We met with the architects. You know, things are on schedule. I don't know if Patrick has anything to add to it.
No, I think you covered everything, Don. We've submitted the plans and specs to SCD. As we reported last time, we're in the queue for the accelerated review, so we figured that might take, you know, four to six weeks versus eight months if we weren't doing that.
Thank you. Don?
Yes?
Anything?
The Orange County School Board Association, that meeting that I attended this past week, was a presentation by David Shaw to discuss the board's role in contract negotiations. So I shared that information with the board, and if anybody has anything they'd like to ask as a follow-up, let me know.
Fantastic. Report by student representative, Mr. Christian Hess.
Alright, so I just really want to touch up on what we talked about, the strategic task force team the other day. Few of the key concerns and really aspects that we talked about were like reaching out to like students, safety in the building, connecting with adults, all things that would really help the student in their daily school day. So first thing, reaching out. We discussed, I thought this was really brilliant, it's called SET, Smile, Eye Contact, Touch. It's very simple and basic. You just really just ask the person, you approach them, doesn't matter who they are, random, and this could go on for, I don't know, a day, week, and I guess you can call it the SET day or the SET week. And you reach out to them, you say hello, how are you, smile, and you know, touch them, but we kind of discussed not so much touch.
I count handshake or a hug.
Yeah, that kind of touch.
Yeah, that kind of touch.
Appropriate, appropriate.
More appropriate. So...
Thanks for clearing that.
Exactly. Emotionally touch them. It's very powerful, and it could really change the dynamic of their day, and I think it'd be very positive to do, especially for the students and even the staff of the high school. This could even happen in some of the other schools, too. There's no wrong, you know, in saying no to the other schools. But another kind of concern, safety. School is very massive. We discussed this, as I said, at the task force team meeting. Kind of a thing with, like, you know, you could, I don't know really how to put this...
Do you want me to help you?
Could you?
Yes. So one of the things that we do is, we, after the strategic plan that we initiated last year, one of the things that they recommended was that the cabinet would meet with students, high school students. And they shared that in this day and age, they have fears because of everything that's going on, you know, throughout the country. And so they are inundated with the news, pictures about what's going on. So there is a sense of fear sometimes when they enter our building because it is a massive building. And so we talked about with the students various ways for us to make them feel safer. Not that they're not safe, but the emotion, right? That was the biggest thing that they talked about. It's just a feeling of not being safe because of the massive size of the building when you talk about so many different, you know, the number of kids coming into the building. So we talked about different things that we were going to discuss with Mr. Scolante regarding that.
Yep. And ultimately, that would create a better school environment. They wouldn't have to focus as much on that, they could focus more so on their studies and stuff. So I thought that was very important to, you know, touch on. So, and another like kind of final thing, these two points kind of go hand in hand, connecting with the adults, and it's also similar to my first point with reaching out in the SET day or SET week. You know, the students, they have like their opportunity to reach out to the adults and get their voices heard, and that's really ultimately what they want to be, they want to be heard. So, and they also want to establish rapport with their teachers, so that also creates a better student environment, you know? And it would, I know for me, and I'm sure I can speak for a lot of the students here, when you create a positive relationship with your teachers, who you will be interacting with every single day, it's just a better environment, and you will learn better, you will feel more comfortable asking questions, and it'll show in your grades, your grades will get a lot better. So that's really it. And also... And also, um, another thing. Uh, not just teachers, it's also, uh, like, the other people around schools, such as security guards, guidance counselors, lunch staff, uh, really anybody, any administrators in the building as well. Um, and it, even today, it happened in school. Um, a girl thought she was being like questioned where she was going by a security guard. But the security guard was just simply asking her, "How, how is she doing? Like, how's your day going?" And she was, she was like happy to hear that. She, I, I saw her smile. It like brought her, brought her up, you know? And that was nice to see, and I'm glad that this, this goes on in school, so. Um, you know, that's, that's what we need more of, so.
It's positive.
Yep, it's positive.
That's great. Thank you very much. Mr. Kravitz?
I'd like to just say something about this. There wasn't supposed to be any questions, right?
Questions.
I actually like this whole SET thing. This is interesting. I've always had a problem with this whole social media, computers, um, the cell phones, the video games, that there's no human touch. There's nobody really talking anymore. Nobody's, you know, everybody's so fast-paced and on the move, and everybody's pretty, a lot of people are uptight. And, you know, I'm glad that you mentioned that even, you know, teachers and administrators, not everyone's having a great day. Um, so, it's, it's good that, you know, you could, it doesn't matter if the student goes to a teacher. The teacher could need that at that moment as much as the student does. I don't know if you recall, Elsie, years ago, I mentioned something about a RAP session.
Yes.
I don't know, but when I went to school, we had like a room. It was like a rap room. And when you had something on your mind, you were able to just like unwind and go and get whatever you want off your chest. Now, it's not an appointment set. You just go... I mean, not a lot of people should be just up and going and going to a room and saying, "Well, forget about class." But a real room where they can go to and just maybe connect with one person, two people. Maybe have that during the SET, you know? Maybe, you know, have, if you want to go and maybe talk about some stuff. Not just say, "Hey, how you doing?", but really, maybe something's on. You know, they're carrying something.
What was it called, the, the rap room?
Rap, like to rap. To BS.
Okay, all right.
Chat, chat. In my old days, that's what we called it. You know, when you rap to somebody. Something that, you know, I know that that would need, probably be manned because you can't just have it, you know, like a free-for-all. But it'd be used specifically for a purpose.
Right.
To just go and, I know we do have the social workers downstairs. They're inundated. It's an appointment. This is something that is someone who just feels like going maybe during their study hall or during a break. Maybe if they don't go to lunch, just go into this area that maybe there's someone else in there that...
Can you just talk to?
Talk to.
Yeah.
You know, you never know what somebody's going through. And how you can help somebody, so. I like your idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Christian?
You want to rap?
Matt Kravitz, what do you got for us? Besides the glass.
Respectfully request the approval for the item listed under personnel.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Anyone second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
He was taking a picture. He was distracted. I don't know what was going on there.
Opposed? Motion carries. Patrick Cahill?
I would also like to respectfully request approval of the items under the business financial section. We have our standard monthly financial reports for October. We have two donations, a donation of a Khan 8D French horn from our own Nicole Reagan, and a donation of $20 from York Claws LLC to North Main Elementary School. So, I'd like to thank those folks for those donations. And we have one contract renewal for our school resource officer with the town of Woodbury. So, if you recall, we had, um, we had set that up from September through the end of December. And, uh, the town is based, like, their contracts and their fiscal year is based on a calendar year. So, we want to align that contract to the calendar year, so the fee is consistent. So, we're, we have that out there for renewal for January 1st, 2019.
Any questions for Patrick? I have a motion to approve?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item 16, Committees on Special Education, Preschool Special Education. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, reports from the Board and Central Office. Chris?
I want to just congratulate all the winners tonight. Uh, I also want to congratulate the Boys and Girls Soccer Team on their accomplishments. Uh, wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. See everybody in January, I guess.
Don?
Same. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Soccer and the Fire Poster winners, and have a great holiday.
Don?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Boys and Girls.
It'd be a little lengthier. Um, first, I'd like to thank Nancy Reagan and the, the kids for their amazing performance.
Nikki.
So nice to walk into.
Nancy's the president's wife.
Post the concert winners. And of course, the Girls and Boys Soccer Team. But I have it on very good authority that the New York State Public High School Athletic Association is recognizing both our teams as being scholar-athlete teams because they have achieved, get this right, 75% of the team has a GPA above 90.
Correct.
For both our teams, and that is amazing.
Excellent.
Really, shout out to that and congratulate them for that. And I want to congratulate Chris for being part of that.
Thank you. I would like, based on that, I would like to add, you know,
Yes.
Christian?
Uh, same, obviously. Uh, well, I want to thank everybody for coming out, especially the two soccer teams and, uh, the kids and the Fire Department. And, uh, happy holidays and happy new year.
Donna?
Congratulations to all the winners. A huge job by the flash mob, uh, tonight. Thank you for setting that up, whoever was responsible. Um, and just wish everyone a wonderful, blessed holiday season. See you in 2019.
Borgoff?
Congratulations to the team, the winner of Fire Safety Poster. Uh, it's a concert season for the school district. Last night, I, I attended the Central Valley 4th Grade Concert. Mrs. Orlt and her music teachers did a great job. Students loved it. Uh, very well attended from the parent's side, too. And have a happy holidays to everybody.
The overly quiet Dr. Hasler.
See that? Um, same as everybody else. Thank you to the students for their contributions, their, their performances. It was awesome. Congratulations to the soccer team, both academically and athletically. Uh, congratulations to our newly inducted National Honor Society members. They had a ceremony last week. So, congratulations to all those students on their accomplishments. And I wish everybody a happy holiday.
Patrick?
Uh, it's been said same. Uh, congratulations to the teams, Boys and Girls Soccer Team. Happy holidays. And, um, one point of information. I, um, I signed a contract for electricity for two years. If you recall, we have a, we're part of a consortium where we buy electricity and natural gas with about 30 other school districts. We had a resolution, we pass it every year, where I'm supposed to inform the board. I have the authority to sign because you have to execute these very quickly. But I'm supposed to inform the board, so consider yourself informed. We, we signed a contract with a kilowatt per hour of about 5.5 cents. The market rate is about 7.3 cents, so we did well, so. That's it.
All right.
Tarot the Bells is my favorite holiday song, and they did a wonderful job. Congrats to all the sports teams tonight. Um, I love seeing the, the Smith Clove kids up here. They were, they were wonderful, too. Uh, yesterday, we went to a bowling match, um, at the Chester, at the Colonial Leans. And it was so incredibly cool. The, the number of kids on our team, I think we had like 34 kids. 33, 34. They were so into it. Their parents were, you know, standing up, cheering, and kind of staring. And then, there was a kid on the opposing team who, who bowled the 300 and like walked away like he's done it five or six times before.
He did.
And he has done it. It was like his sixth, you know, perfect game. And he was like, "Yeah, it's no big deal. Perfect game." But, uh, kudos to Lori Hock for really getting it off the ground and Coach Vero and those students who, um, were just amazing, so.
We're going to try to get him to move to Monroe.
That is true.
He's going to recruit bowlers. It's great. Um, but have a wonderful holiday, everybody.
All right.
Congratulations to the Fire Poster, um, students and to the soccer team. And yes, when the young lady came up to speak, I was just blown away. I looked at Stacy. We like had tears in our eyes when they were just standing up and singing. It was absolutely beautiful. And, um, have a wonderful holiday and see you next year.
Stacy?
Um, same. I wish everybody a great holiday. I want to thank all of the present, presentations. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Soccer Team. And I just want to touch on one thing. I'm sorry, I'm just going to look at my notes because I don't want to mess anything up. But I was able to go a few weeks back, um, to the Stars Presentation that our, a bunch of our students went to over at Pine Tree. It was hosted at Pine Tree because there were so many students this year. But, um, Jessica Wright is the advisor to this club. And I had a little bit of background into it, but learned quite a bit that day. Dawn and I were able to kind of, you know, see that it was kind of like a spin-off almost of MW Cares. She was able to have three guest speakers there. And I have to give kudos to her because it's an after-school advisory club that she was able this year to take over 100 students because there are so many kids that are wanting to be part of this organization. And I think it's a great thing because it goes into what Christian is saying, that these are kids that are learning about mental health. And they went to this day, and they had three guest speakers lined up, each one a little bit different. The last student that got up there was probably maybe late teens, early twenties. And this young person stood up in front of that room of over 100 of our students with anxiety issues. And managed to speak as much as they could, but they were very nervous and very socially anxious. And that day, I had a handful of girls in my car, and they talked about it. And I think things like this, that we can bring awareness to the students, is just great because it really, it hits home with them. And I think it's a need that the kids are obviously looking for. So, I just want to say thank you because I think it's, it's a big undertaking. Have a great holiday.
I, I just want to say, "Thank Dan for dressing up as Santa." He's a good sport. Don't get so excited.
Elsie?
Mrs. Claus. I want to begin by saying a big, big thank you to our high school voice ensemble. Their performance was spectacular. They're just amazing. Um, and they're directed by Dr. Krone, so kudos to Dr. Krone. And of course, to our students from Smith Clove. Thank you to the Smith Clove administration and the teacher who was here with them. It was absolutely beautiful. And the things that they all mentioned, because they take everything that I'm going to say before I get to say so, yes, to everything that they said. But they did mention something, so I'm happy. We attended, um, an event called Heroes and Helpers Holiday Event at Target. And that is run by our school social worker at Central Valley, Denise Guerrero. And what she does is she collaborates with our local police, our EMS, and Target. And 60 of our children get $60 gift cards for Target. And then, the police officers and the EMS walk with our students and give them toys for the holiday. So, it's a wonderful event. She does so much work. So, kudos to Denise Guerrero. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And, um, yes, thank you for dressing up as Santa Claus. It was, and he worked really hard to keep the, the beard on so while the children were here.
Didn't want to cooperate, so.
That was very, very sweet, and happy holidays.
Well, I just want to say, you know, it's, it seems like the first half of the year, even though we, it's really January. But it's been a fantastic first, what, four months of school. A lot of great things going on here, and a lot of wonderful things to come. Uh, I wish everybody a fantastic holiday season. Teachers, seven more teaching days to break. Just the countdown continues. Uh, and I, I hope that John Hubert has a speedy recovery back, and he's back here with us for, uh, January. And with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn into anticipated executive session?
Motion.
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.